I call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting in the Seward Nebraska Governing Body. The city has served by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speaker card to the clerk. Residents shall approach the podiums, take the name and address from the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Kayler.
Here.
Coulterman.
Here.
Streisand.
Here.
Tanyus.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Francis Cowan.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Alright, thank you. The first five items make up this evening's consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
The motion and a second is in discussion. Saying not to address your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowan, Kayler, Tanyus, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, under administrative items, item number one, consideration of a claim from Russell Haines, eleven fifty-six North Eighth Street for personal property damage in the amount of one thousand two hundred ninety dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Yep, this is a wastewater claim at eleven fifty-six North Eighth Street. I believe, Brandon, you're here, we did have a wastewater issue not called to this specific house, is that correct? Or we were?
We were.
We were. So our standard operating procedures on these, per the recommendation of Kelly, is forward this on to insurance and to our attorney for disposition.
Make a motion, we move this on to our insurance.
And attorney.
And attorney.
Second. The motion and a second is in for discussion. Saying not to address your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowan, Kayler, Tanyus, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Item two, consideration of a request from the Seward Arts Council for approval of sale and consumption of alcohol beverages at the Seward Bandshell for second Saturday Art Connections Series during summer of twenty twenty-five. Allison.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do we fill this out now or?
If you win this at some point.
Okay, I'm Allison Cook. I'm with the Seward Arts Council. And this will be our third year doing a summer music series at Bandshell. We have three dates that we have live music at the Bandshell and we serve drinks, have food trucks, kids activities, things like that. So this request is to serve alcohol on the city property at the Bandshell. Any questions on that?
Any questions or comments from the council?
Want to approve?
Motion and a second for approval is in for discussion. Saying not to address your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowan, Kayler, Tanyus, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Thank you. Item three, discussion of long-term plan for recycling.
Yeah, this one will be me and Streetsubersen Bob Myers. In recent years, Bob and I have continued to monitor the situation down at our current recycling center. And a number of items have led up to this conversation happening. We did meet with the mayor a few weeks back and discussed this. We've since reduced hours due to a few number of issues. The first one I will talk about is we began down at recycling center when we are manned, writing down license plate counties. We're not writing down everybody's specific license plates. And then if we have a big user or somebody we recognize that we think is associated with a business or something, we write down who they're associated with, just to kind of get a flavor and feel of who our users are down there on a regular basis. So Linda's been doing that down there and I will tell you, very interesting. Now, we didn't want to put all these in there because we didn't want to throw people under the bus and stuff, so we put it in packet. But one of the big ones we've learned is we are definitely subsidizing recycling in a three-county area. And it's specifically Butler County and York County. We have a number of seventeen and twenty-five county, and very specifically twenty-five county users that are putting substantial amounts of recyclables and the biggest one being corrugated cardboard.
Why do we think that is?
Well, the reason for that is they don't have any recycling centers in either those counties anymore. York shut theirs down a number of years ago, I believe, Bob. And I don't think Butler County's had anything. The two up in, the main two up in Butler County that we're doing, which may be bigger than we even think, it may basically be the David City Recycling Service, is the pickup sites, I believe, are Saint Mary's and our Aquanis. Aquanis is bringing down their recyclables themselves and dropping them off every week, multiple times a week sometimes. And then the stuff that's being collected, I believe, at Saint Mary's is being picked up by Region Five up there as part of a project to work with their Region Five people. And then they drive it down here and give it to us. It is substantial. I believe they're probably two of the largest recycling users we have that come to the recycling center. So with that, we do all and are paying for all the time it takes to process, bail, load, and get ready to put trailers together so that we can then ship it out to, I think it was First Star Fiber. And I just got our First Star Fiber bill from April thirtieth. That bill for one month is two thousand bucks. We make absolutely no money recycling now. Where years ago, when recycling was kind of high on the hog, pre-COVID, we were seeing that there was some marketability to some recyclables. But after COVID, the Chinese market closing on most of the plastics and other recyclables and then the explosion in corrugated cardboard, there's absolutely no market for recyclables. It is only cost for us to have this stuff hauled away.
And now we're kind of becoming a regional hub because they've been closing in other places. So we're kind of the last, the last person standing, so to speak. And so that's the reason why we had this conversation, to decide how, what do you want the next step to be? Because it is costing time and resources to, to, to conduct this service. And there really is no, at least no financial benefit. When I was a kid, I remember my dad was a member of ICS, Isaac Walton, and I remember going down there as a kid, mostly being in the way. But, you know, they would be down there recycling and organizing it. A lot of people would just dump stuff off, so you'd go pick it up. But unfortunately, like Greg said, there's not really a market for it anymore to, to make financial sense. And, and we did, we needed some guidance on the next steps.
Well, one thing, first thing I would do is be sending these bills to the waste. In Milford, you at least get twenty-five percent back and there's a potential that could go up to fifty percent in the near future. But that's only a thousand dollars out of the thousand you get back. So, but with that, that's, I'm saying we should be submitting that bills.
Well, we're paying, how many hours a week are we open now? Twenty-five?
Well, we're open every day.
I mean, for the, the hours of the employee, Bob?
For the employee, twenty hours on average a week.
So we're paying somebody twenty hours just to be down there and man it. We continue to have issues with people dumping stuff down there. Where they just go in and throw it all over the place. The cardboard, the cardboard is supposed to be cut up to certain size because it won't even fit. When we get these giant TV boxes and stuff, those don't even fit in the baler. They have to be cut up and broke down. That's part of our rules and regs and no one ever does it. And so it falls back on, it's just a big heaping mess that we're following up on. The other one is this service is offered by all of our haulers, I believe, in town. So both Yaribi and Belcon currently offer curbside recycling. That's another thing that's going on now where maybe, you know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, that wasn't.
Well, and, and so. And people want to, you know, there's, there's cer, there are, you know, there's a desire as far as wanting to do recyclables. But I'm not convinced that the recyclables are going where you think that they're going, just because the market's not there. So there is somewhat of a, are we really accomplishing anything by recycling at this point? Or are we just making things more complicated and more work for everybody? Because we're not really seeing that benefit that you may have seen in the past. Because like Greg said, there really isn't a market for most of this stuff anymore.
There is, and I'm on that board, so I know exactly what I see. And like I said, one thing is, is we ought to just, if we're going to continue, is to narrow it down to Seward County only.
Hi, Kelly. I asked, I asked Kelly this exact question this morning.
I have a concern about, you know, just segregating and limiting, limiting it to a particular class of people from a legal standpoint. I don't want to get us into any hot water from a discrimination standpoint.
How did the county get away with that with tires?
We just set up the rules and we learned the hard way with the first recycle event, we let everybody in. And it, it basically lasted about five hours and we were done. We wanted to run it for two days. The last one that we did here this past weekend, I was out there for all Saturday morning. We were checking license plates. You had to have a sixteen-county tag, truck and trailer. And we were taking driver's license information to verify your address as being Seward County. If you weren't a Seward County resident, you didn't dump tires.
But you're still worried about it?
That's a one-day event or a two-day event.
Before you did that, were there a lot of people from other places? Is that why you believe it filled up so fast?
Yeah, I mean, we had people coming from Butler, Lancaster, all the surrounding counties. And a lot of them were heavy commercial users that were people that basically got the ten dollars for the tire fees, in a sense. And they dumped their stuff on us. So they pocketed the money and they dumped their recyclable tires in our, in our program. So, I mean, that's why we tightened it up like we did. And we didn't get near the participation this year that we had previous. I'm guessing that we probably won't do this next year. We may give it a year or two. Because we paid for this last one. We'll probably go after a grant here for the next one.
Who paid?
The county did. We paid for it.
And? It was a mutual between Milford Dump and.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's, there's some things there between the areas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's counting the paper at all.
No, I know that. We got some money from somewhere.
Fifteen fifteen.
So I guess what we're seeing is, 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 you know.
If, if we decide to do it that way, I want to preview and make sure that's, we have a rash.
And we have done something, when we charge for other things, and we have done this before, like at the library. If you're a Seward resident, you don't have to pay for a library card. If you're outside, you do. So there are some distinctions that can be made, but we're not charging anything for this. So it's not like we can charge one and not, we could charge one and not the other. But the bigger question is, do we really want to continue down this path? Because financially, we're, we're, we're losing money. It's a big hassle, you know, it takes up a lot of resources. At the end of the day, as I was once told, we're, we're a very progressive community. I mean, you don't change anything. And I know we've had this, you know, recycling center for a very, very long time. And I think there are some local businesses that do rely on it to get rid of a lot of the cardboard and other materials that they would always have to pay to have taken away. So, so I guess what one, so like so far, you know, with tonight, you know, like limiting maybe the hours or, or if we wanted to just do away with this or phase it out over time. I just, I don't know if it's truly accomplishing what it was meant, set out to accomplish even ten years ago. And until there's a market that comes back for recyclables, I don't know that you're going to see that change anytime.
How many days are we open?
We're open Mondays and Fridays. There's one we keep it open, but it's only manned three days. Then two hours on Saturday, but our volunteers have dwindled down almost nothing now.
If we went this to Saturdays, you'd have enough volunteers than we just did on Saturdays?
That's just it. We don't have the volunteers we used to have.
I think the, the idea would be is to limit the hours to when we have people there.
Yeah, that's what I originally planned was.
And that addresses some of the other issues of people just coming in at any time and drop, dropping the materials, making a mess, creating more work. At least you'd have somebody there, kind of like a burn site where, you know, you can at least control and see what people are doing. Makes it a little bit more efficient and a little bit less haphazard. Is that kind of what you were thinking?
And I would look at, at least let Kettley look at the opportunity to eliminate subsidizing the out-of-county ones. I'll, I'll tell you, looking through these, and you guys can come over and look at them when you get a chance. It's almost half of your people are just businesses that you're subsidizing to let them dump off all their cardboard.
My opinion is that Kelly will get it for legal. And then possibly just having it only open until like eight to noon, like to dump one day a week.
Well, I think what the thought was, you have people that are already maintaining some hours.
Correct. I have a part-time person, but then our full-time guys will get pulled away probably three or four times a week to go down there and bail or unload a trailer or help load a trailer or whatever.
Would you be able to just do it like on a Saturday like John's suggesting?
I think you would be inundated with the volume you see here. If all these people show up on Saturday and wait around until that to dump their stuff.
I guess I was thinking this and, and with John's earlier question about be limited to sixteen-county vehicles, for example, or even further to Seward, Seward residents, drivers, you know, Seward addresses. I don't know how far you want to drill down, but whatever that, if you restrict it to that, you eliminate a lot of this, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just making sure we're not getting a huge slug on Saturday. And then you still have to pay somebody to come in and clean up the mess. Because in four hours, there's not enough time. I mean, I'll read some of these off. Aquanis Flags, Seward Motor Freight, Spare Time Lounge, Blue Valley Food, CVA, Langer Electric, I mean, Windmill, Tree Farm, I mean, Burns Body Shop, all these different businesses in town. I know Trish with, with House Davidson and them, they go there and they have a lot of cardboard because they're a furniture business. I mean, if they all show up on a Saturday, we'll be inundated. I mean, we will have hours upon hours of work to just process all that cardboard. So I think going to that level is going to just create, you're going to have cars backed up all the way up the street waiting to get in there potentially. I don't know. Bob?
You're probably looking at, we'll get probably three or four bales a week. At least one of those is from Butler County alone. The rest of them are Seward and probably some from York and that. But the price, I mean, the billing's going to be about the same no matter what we do if we keep it open. Right now, we're probably what's been in, I don't remember what our recycling budget is, it's probably around fifty thousand dollars, I suppose.
I think the issues that we're looking at, one is if you're open when people aren't there to monitor it, you have a mess. That's an issue. So if you eliminated the hours where you don't have somebody monitoring it, that addresses that issue. The, have been inundated by people from outside of Seward County or the city of Seward, that to me is a separate issue. And looking at that is, okay, should that be limited or restricted? And if you could, and that would be a Kelly question as to what that would look like. And then, of course, the overarching question for all this is, do we want to keep doing this at all? So you kind of have three different issues here. Two of them work together to reduce the amount of material. The third is just simply not doing this at all moving forward or ratcheting this down to a point where we phase it out in a certain amount of time. So it is, the question is, how important is this to the community? Because like Greg said, you know, it's not like, you know, your residents, the residents aren't utilizing this near to the extent that the commercial businesses are. And do we want to basically be subsidizing that or not?
I think the first thing is with Kelly. Then we'll, we can make a decision more then if it's legal to go to Seward.
I feel like the people who are using it are people who don't either know about the other recycling options for them, that like they can get.
Well, it's cheaper.
No, I don't think it's a money thing. I think it's, I think it's that, I'm going to say like back when we set this up, so what was that, twenty-five-ish?
No, this has been going on a while.
Long before me.
I don't know. I don't know how long it's been going on, but it's like.
Forty years ago, I'd be down with my dad when they're doing it. And you would see people, like individuals would come in with their trunk, open it up, and they'd have like paper sacks of recyclables.
Well, my dad still does that and so did my grandma. Well, my grandma did it up until she passed. But like, I think it was a mindset, like this is where I take my recyclables. I don't think it's a money thing.
Right.
I think it's like, oh, this is where I take them. And they, they haven't evolved to like the services in your, that come to your home, right? Like I think that might be the issue as, as much more than it's.
Well, I think there's a certain amount of commercial volume is what, is what we're seeing is that rather than then storing it at their facility and paying for it to be taken away, they can just run it down here and drop it off and then it becomes, it's these problems to figure out how to cut it and bundle it and, and process.
But like when I've gotten asked to take things down there for the grandmas, there's other, like local community individuals who are dropping stuff off too.
There's some, but I, I think the vast majority of it though is commercial, right?
For cardboard.
For cardboard. For volume. The volume is a massive, during the volume is commercial.
I believe that. I'm more worried about the individuals.
Because I do think there are people who are, for individuals, I think a lot of them have the service at their house if they care that much.
Or they don't know.
That's right. Or we'll have a county problem where they're dumping the ditch like they used to do in the tires because that's why we went to this years and years ago.
So it sounds like, from my hearing, is that we have, maybe have Kelly review a draft that would focus on limiting it to some extent, whether it's the county or the city. And Kelly can work on that. As far as, I guess the question tonight is, do you want to keep things the way they are regarding the hours? Or would you be comfortable limiting access to when we have people down there? To try to avoid some of the, the, the surprises that show up.
Is there something you can do to limit it to individuals?
I don't, whenever you, every Kelly question, whenever you start telling, some people can and some people can't use a government service, you run into a plethora of, of potential issues. But for, I guess for tonight's purposes, I mean, you can always look, explore that.
Yeah, I'll make that a part of my.
I, I mean, we do it now. Let's think about this. If I get an individual burn key, it costs a certain amount. And if I get a recyc, if I get a corporate burn key, it costs a different amount.
But we're not charging anybody for this service. We're distinguishing between, it's like the library.
So do we need to charge them one dollar if they're down to two dollars if they're out and now we can distinguish them?
Because I think the argument with like the library is you're using tax dollars to support it. So if you're a resident, you would, you could have it for free, but if you're not, you'd have to pay for it. I think that was the always rational, I understood. But as far as this discussion goes, because this has a lot of moving parts to it, it sounds like Kelly can work on a, on a draft policy that would talk about geography of those coming and using it as well as individuals versus commercial or industrial. But as far as tonight, do you want it to, to limit it to, to access to it, to when there are people there working it? To try to avoid the issue of things showing up when there's no one there.
What would hours be, Bob?
It'd be, I believe, open Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays.
And what time?
Eight, it's eight to threes when she's there.
So you would have any problem reducing hours?
No, we'd just be closed two days a week instead of being open from three to all.
Okay. So each is saying, we have, we have employees down there on Tuesdays, Thursday?
She's there three days a week.
And Saturday morning.
And Saturday morning.
Saturday morning.
I, I think limit it to that.
I think the hours.
Yeah, limit to when somebody's there.
Does that make sense?
I'd agree, yeah.
Okay, we probably want to do a motion just to clean it up unless there's any other discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Get on that cost. Is it, did you say two thousand a month and is it volume-based?
Yes.
And then what we need to do is really drive, because we do once in a while see bills come to the waste in Milford. But we could benefit a little bit more by doing that. And there's a potential that where we give twenty-five back, twenty-five percent back to all communities who submit their bills. There's a potential we might be increasing it because we have been getting a little bit more money. But a little bit more offset. So if we reduce the hours, we submit the bills to the Milford waste, maybe that'll help a lot.
As far as this.
Reducing the hours won't save us anything at all. But, and we submit those, so we have to give them at least once every, I think, six months we try to do it.
So Johnny, you can make in a motion that we would limit access to when we have personnel that are.
City personnel.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second is in for a discussion. Saying not to address your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowan, Kayler, Tanyus, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And when, when Kelly is ready, he, thank you. Perfect, thank you. When Kelly is ready, we'll bring it back to the council for your consideration.
Yeah.
Item, item four, consideration of an addendum, number two, to the cooperative Public Safety Software, Hardware and Related Services. Chief Peters, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. The addendum that is being presented is just adds three new entities to our existing inter-local agreement. This one will add David City, Crete and Butler County 911 Center as part of our Zerker group.
Can you explain the Zerker group a little?
How come about?
Zerker was, okay, Zerker is our computer-aided dispatch. And it's also our records management system. Originally, it was Seward, Seward County, Seward 911, Saline County, I think Butler County. No, Butler pulled out.
York.
York.
Thank you.
And then they came back in.
Yeah, then they came back to the table. They were kind of deciding what they want to do. We, once our system was built and Seward County is the primary location as far as servicing and main, or we don't maintain, but we house the hardware server. There's a backup server in York County. So if anything does happen to ours, it automatically switches over there. We, we all incurred an initial cost, which, since we did it as a group, it actually reduced the cost for each of the original entities. However, everybody that's been added since, I know Milford jumped in not too long ago, they will work out their payments directly with Zerker. So it really doesn't have any effect on what we pay for our annual service fees, which are ballparking less than four thousand dollars as we move forward. The ability for additional agencies to be part of this group is it allows us more direct communication, officers to officers, officers to deputies and vice versa. And they can reach out individually, because this is all done by their, on their laptops and their vehicles. And get out instant bolos, we've got a vehicle we need to look for, things of that nature, vehicles to watch out for, people to watch out for, without necessarily having to go through communications, where people might be able to scan and listen. So it's, it's proved very effective. We, I anticipate, we're kind of getting off our tangent here, but probably in the next year or two, we're going to be looking at moving to a cloud-based system as opposed to a server. Just because of the amount of, you know, information that the server is storing right now. So, but again, this is, this is our second one. I believe the last one brought the city of Milford in. We are, these folks are also part of our working group. We meet once a month just to make sure things are going well for anybody who's experiencing any difficulties, things that may be, need to be addressed with Zerker directly. Zerker is in on these Zoom meetings as well. So overall, it's been, been a really good working relationship between us, the other entities and then Zerker. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments or anything?
Maria, I don't, I think I'm saying it right.
Mariah.
Maria, is she okay with everything in this?
Yeah.
Yes. And again, there, it's her dispatch center that's housing that, that server. And we're, we're just getting to the point where it's, we're just outgrowing it. And except the cloud base is a bit more expensive, but I think it'll probably be the direction we're going to want to head. But I have no, we haven't got any estimates or I've got nothing as far as numbers, but like I said, that's kind of getting off track here. but like I said, that's kind of getting off track here. Man, I just wanted to bring in David City, Creed and Butler County nine one one. And I don't have an explanation as to why they're separate. One is directed by the sheriff's office and the other is directed by the commissioners up there. So they're treated separately.
Any other questions or comments? Will you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion from this part.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Saying not to register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, everybody.
Item five, consideration of amendment number two to the agreement with J E O Consulting Group Incorporated for Design Engineering Services for the East Hillcrest Improvements Project in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, we've had this contract, uh, open for quite a bit of time since December of, of twenty-one. This is J E O's, no longer Julie Ogden in Wahoo, which was our long-term provider and street superintendent of record for many years. We have a new group in Grand Island that has, um, performed the design of this. This is for the design of, um, the, it, the widening of, uh, East Hillcrest from East Ridge down to the Plum Creek Bridge. Uh, so there is a, it intersects with Carroll K, the new boulevard. Uh, there's some, uh, access issues for Concordia. And, uh, it's a, it's a quite a complicated project. There's a lot of large diameter storm sewer in the project. And essentially the last time we met was in, uh, February and, uh, they're still proceeding on design. There's still a number of design elements to complete. Uh, so I asked for an amendment to, um, uh, be able to include those, uh, changes. Uh, we are asking them to develop, uh, right-of-way easement, uh, documents. Uh, so right now, um, because of how the land was incorporated within the city limits annexed, we don't have any formal right-of-way. And also electric is modifying where their lines are running through there. The rather substantial, uh, electric lines that are serving as a main feed for the city into that area. So we're coordinating with the electric project, they're moving their lines to accommodate the widening of the road. The bike trail is going to be extended up to Concordia. And, um, e- essentially we have two different design engineers working around each other. So we're going to combine the easements necessary for electric along with easements and right-of-way that are necessary for this, uh, road project and bike trail. So with that, the estimated fee here that they're asking for is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to accomplish those tasks. Uh, second amendment bringing the total for the agreement, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. And of course, that total relative to the, uh, project and all its design elements are in line with what we have paid other providers for similar road projects. So with that, ask for approval of this amendment.
Some moved.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second for approval? Any further discussion? Saying not to register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, item six, consideration of amendment number three to the agreement with the Schimmer Associates Incorporated for the Sixth Street Ash Tube Lincoln Street Water Main Project in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, thank you so much. So, uh, this here, this is, uh, our project, the, uh, the water main project to essentially install a new water main, move it out of the way of this, uh, state storm sewer project. That project itself incurred a lot of changes. And so, um, uh, we switched from a lot of open trench to boring in the middle of the project, which had less impact than many of the businesses here in Central Business District. We also found surprisingly, a water main that we installed along Hillcrest underneath, uh, Highway, um, fifteen, uh, was, was intersecting the future storm sewer, so we had to drop that. We also had to abandon the old, uh, six inch main running along the south side of six, of Hillcrest, uh, from fifth to seventh street. And so we had to cap those off. And so, and then we had to move a hydrant, um, that was installed a few years ago at North and Sixth Street to move out of the way of, uh, storm sewer projects. So all these conflicts added to that project. In effect, um, what we have here is the, uh, the engineer that had, uh, provided inspection services through all those changes. Uh, this is amendment number three, but effectively this is to complete the project. Obviously it's extended, uh, well past. So this spring, um, they did yard restoration. Tomorrow they're doing some sidewalk restoration that was broken during the, uh, during the project for boring equipment that had to be placed in the right-of-way. Um, so we think the, this is obviously the end of the project, uh, last few weeks. And this'll complete that inspection work for that project. So, uh, ask, uh, council's approval for this amendment, the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Saying not to register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
Item seven, consideration of amendment number two to the agreement with the Schimmer Associates Incorporated for the Bradford Street Storm Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. So this is the same, uh, engineering, uh, services provider, Schimmer. They did the design for this, both Park Avenue and Bradford. The amendment is strictly for the Bradford project. Again, we had many changes, there were many water main loops. We removed the brick at, um, uh, Seventh and Bradford and converted that to all, um, concrete pavement through that intersection. Uh, we found a couple of conflicts between existing, uh, sanitary services for residences that went across the path of the thirty-six inch storm sewer that was installed to drain the highway. And we had to create saddles, lower that sanitary service, uh, below that. We found another one, um, this, uh, winter, that was, I think in January during cold weather. And so that work was, uh, performed as well. And, uh, they planned to seed, uh, today was the day they had planned, but due to the muddy conditions, uh, that's deferred once again. Again, we think that, uh, the project will be completed in about a, a couple of weeks. And this amendment is to, um, complete the engineering services, uh, during construction for that project. So with that, a task for approval for this amendment two in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll move to approve, one hundred and two.
Second.
The motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Saying not to register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, item eight, consideration of a recommendation to award a construction contract to Verba Construction in the amount of five hundred, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, thank you so much. So I believe in your packet was the bid form, we had nine bidders. Uh, so that was an unusually high amount, very competitive as well. The engineer's estimate for this project, which we did not release in advance, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and three dollars. So this low bidder from Verba represented just sixty-two percent of that engineer's estimate. So in the last five years, I believe there was only one project where the engineer's estimate wasn't the absolute low bidder of all, of construction bids. Uh, in this case, the engineer's estimate was higher than all nine bids. And so over the last five years, we've struggled to get sometimes zero bids, one bid, or just a few bidders. And in this case, it is indicative of the market where all of a sudden now we have turned the tables. Um, we didn't have enough people, machinery, materials for the infrastructure projects over the last five years. And now for the first time, we're seeing, uh, good competitive bids. And we're taking advantage, uh, with this bid of a very favorable, uh, bid from Verba. The engineer did evaluate Verba's bid, they have not in recent memory worked for the city of Seward, they're from Skyler. Um, they do work around, uh, around the eastern part of the state. Uh, doing this type of work, infrastructure work, they seem highly qualified. So with that, I would recommend, um, awarding this, uh, water main phase two project out at the rail campus, uh, Worthman Boulevard to Verba Construction in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents.
So Mike, with the, with the, the, um, this, this bid being less than the engineer's estimate, does that affect the amount of the C D, C, I always say that wrong, C, can you, C D B G grant?
That is a good question. I, I have to defer to Greg, cause I didn't follow up on that issue.
Um, what they'll do is they'll just look at the match, so it's a percentage match on that one. So I think, believe that match is a fifty percent match, if I remember, that's pretty standard. So it'll just be a match percentage, if we don't hit a certain threshold, that grant level will come down. I thought we were over our initial estimate, so coming down to this. Uh, the total between this project and the street project, if they come in, will be, uh, what's our total, do you know? Estimated, is it just slightly north of two?
Uh, it, it is. I'm trying to think of what the, uh, one point, uh, one point nine million plus this, uh, five hundred thousand, uh, two point four million.
Again, I think our grant was a million, so it's a fifty-fifty grant, we're still within the realm of it. Again, we're the beneficiaries of just getting better. I would much rather have better bidding environment and take that percentage. Cause that, that's gonna shed over all our projects and so. I'll take, I'll take a few off a C D B G grant to see bids like this. I mean, this is outstanding.
One of, one of the other reasons for this also as well is, uh, we've been in a very inflationary environment, that's why the engineer's estimate is high. But they're essentially laying water, water main in an open field and it, easygoing. Phase one was a water to Van Kirk, they put in four hundred and seventy-four feet in two days, right? And then a couple of the appurtenances and they were effectively done in two total weeks. And so it's very fast-moving, so that's probably, uh, a good, a good reason why this is so, so long. So it's a, a real bargain, so we're fortunate to have that bid.
Any other questions or comments from the council or you entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Saying not to register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, item nine, consideration of a resolution to approve supplement number two to professional services agreement signed November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, to provide environmental services for the Plum Creek Bridge replacement project. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. So this, uh, supplement amount, the second supplement for the NEPA, uh, services in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-three cents. This is a sum paid entirely, uh, by the federal government that's funding the bridge project at a hundred percent. So we will not, the city will not incur any, any cost in this. Same with the design, the same with construction and all. Uh, NEPA is a federal acronym, stands for National Environmental Policies Act. We have both a bridge consultant, bridge designer, and we have a NEPA, uh, consultant as well. And they handle the archaeological issues, um, uh, is it disturbing any, um, settlement, old settlement sites? Uh, endangered species, the, the runway that used to, the landing strip that used to exist out of Crete's property came up. Uh, wetland delineation, this adds the, um, uh, public comment portion to that NEPA contract is what it did. That, that portion is almost done, we got comments in, they're due to be posted very shortly. Uh, we had like nine comments from residents and they were all, uh, quite good. But anyway, this, what, what we need to do as a city is to pass this resolution, allow the mayor to sign, uh, this, uh, local, um, uh, party's agreement, um, with, um, the state in authorizing this money to go to our, uh, NEPA, uh, consulting engineer.
Any questions or comments for Mike?
Mike, I was, okay. Mike, unlike, unlike the last topic on the agenda, then the people responsible for getting the best, qualified, lowest bidder will be the state?
It will be the state. So we do still anticipate in bidding this in August, so we bid every two months. Um, there is an issue with the, the comments. Uh, there was, uh, half the comments mentioned the condition of two hundred and fifty-second street in particular. And now the state is evaluating whether that's a detour route for a year, year and a half that this project will go on. The state's evaluating now whether they're going to, uh, require improvements to that road as part of this project. And of course, that potentially might delay the project. But, uh, but essentially whenever that bid comes up, if it's still August or it falls too much later to, uh, October or, or even past that, uh, the state will bid and select bidders. Just, just like the highway project for us.
Any other questions or comments or do you want to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and as designated as resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, would anyone like to move with this resolution, be passed and adopted?
Some moved.
Have a motion and a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, item number ten, consideration of a resolution to enter into a loan agreement with the Nebraska Department of Environmental, Environment and Energy, N D E E, which has a new name. Uh, for our purposes is N D E E for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Mike, and this is six in a row for you, that's a personal best, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so this is, uh, extraordinarily good news because for all the years that we've been designing the new wastewater plant, uh, we were told by the state that we are, uh, financially well off enough, we don't qualify, uh, even for a, a federally government subsidized loan, right, at a good loan rate. So that's changed as of this year. Uh, we're trying to get this paperwork approved, rates are going up in mid-July. So our current, this current agreement here is draft agreement is on par to get us, uh, at the current rates of one point four percent uh, at thirty years. And so that time period is also quite good. An example is, uh, so this is initially for, um, without the dairy project, uh, construction cost in the realm of thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollars. Um, the numbers, if we, now we, uh, met with, I didn't meet, but Mayor and, and Brandon and Greg met with N D E, uh, last week. And they think they can cover the increased, uh, uh, expansion of the plant with this contract to the tune of fifty point five, fifty-one million dollars. Also with this S R F loan at one point four percent in thirty years. So the comparison is, uh, we were facing four percent commercial paper, twenty-year loan. That payment annually on that debt would be three point seven million. Um, and under this agreement here for the fifty-one million dollars at one point four percent over thirty years, it's two million dollars. And so effectively we would have potentially had to pay, find a way to pay an extra one point seven million dollars per year from ratepayers. So the interest rate and the term of loan is extremely favorable. And so we probably won't see, uh, favorable rates like this. So they're going up to a little over two percent in July is what's predicted. And so still a good rate, but, um, uh, I think it's imperative that we move forward at this moment in time and take advantage of the opportunity that we have.
Ultimately, it's gonna be a big ticket item and we're just doing everything we can to minimize those, those costs. And so finding cheap money is the most obvious way if you can do it. And so, um, fortunately we were able to figure out a way to accomplish that, um, with this program.
Just like the water main project, hopefully we're entering a favorable, uh, market where we'll get very competitive bids on this highly substantial project, you know, a contractor hungry, hungry for work. So we think all the time is working in Seward's favor.
Any questions or comments from the council or do you want to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and as designated as resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, would anyone like to move with this resolution, be passed and adopted?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, go rest, Mike. Item eleven, consideration of a resolution to establish a policy for use of city property and to establish costs.
Yes, um, we noted in different, um, requests that have come into city hall, um, two different things. One is for years and years and years, we've been requested, can we get picnic tables, can we get cones, can we get barricades? And then we have to deliver those things out, we have to pick them up. There was never an associated fee or anything with that. And we kind of looked around and we felt that, um, some sort of nominal fee also that helps us with the cost of getting them back, things like that, uh, should be involved. Um, and under the recommendation of meeting with both Bob Myers and Bob Core, cause they're the predominant groups. because they're the predominant groups that are going out and doing this, um, we would put together a specific policy. It also enables what is available and what is not. Uh, we'll note there's an exception for the Fourth of July and the Christmas parade at this time. That may, you may, we may need to adjust that later, but those are things that the city is actively a participant in. We are a member of the board and serve on both of those committees. That's an active thing that we're doing. So it's different from, I'm having a block party and I want Bob to bring me trash cans, cones, and, and barricades to close my block after the street closure and all that. That's one of it. The other one is just the denoting of, uh, the utilization of, um, equipment, uh, used by city properties. We keep getting these requests coming in, and we never really had anything super formal other than the handbook that didn't really give us a specific guide. So if you see that section two, general guidelines of the use of city property, uh, it essentially says that things like tractors, mowers, shop equipment, things like that, uh, will not be loaned out to any member of the public or employee for personal use. We just want to be more specific on that. If we give a rate and we allow the public to get something, then we can utilize that and utilize that same rate for employees, but there's no specific benefit that comes to being an employee that they get free access to the stuff, so. Has been a major issue, but we've had people come along and ask, and we don't have anywhere to point them that's a little bit more concrete, and we just feel it's important. Uh, we have great users. Our, our guys that work on the equipment and stuff, they know how to work it. But, you know, if Jared from the electric department comes in and goes, hey, can I use the bucket truck to go put my Christmas lights up in my house? No, we're not going to do that.
Well, there's a time where like, someone might borrow a chainsaw, right? Something that would have liability attached to that where it was just kind of a, I don't know, it wasn't even a policy, it was just, I borrow a chainsaw. Someone said, yeah, so they took the chainsaw and they brought it back up one day. So we, when that started happening is when we kind of said, okay, we need to probably have a policy on this, and so that's when the initial policy came into place.
This one just, just tightens it back up, kind of gets in everything and it's very specific and stuff. Um, no blowback, nobody's yelled at us or mad at us. We just felt like we needed a little bit, something more concrete. And then obviously laid out those eligibility ones for rental, so. Can you answer any other questions yet?
So that means employees will not be able to take anything home and use it anymore?
Yes.
Well, they're not supposed to be.
I'm just saying, if it's a benefit to the employee, I just didn't know if that was going on or-
There's a liability with it if they are.
Yeah, we, we, we address this probably, I'm guessing, ten years ago.
Yeah, pretty immediately.
Because we, we were, and it wasn't so much borrowing a rake, it was borrowing a chainsaw or something that had some liability. I think I discussed that with you at the time, and, and I think you looked at me like I was crazy that we were doing this. And I'm like, well, that's what I'm telling you, you probably shouldn't be doing this because, you know, someone gets hurt with a chainsaw that they borrowed from the city that we gave them permission to use. And so then from that, we expanded this policy, um, just to try to be consistent.